Okay.
What are they collecting for, using for just the card?
Card taxes?
Everything.
Everything?
Oh, okay.
That would just have an extra forward.
Sam, question on that, um, the fees that the credit card company collects?
Correct.
Is the town absorbing those?
No, the customers absorbing those.
Oh, just.
That's fair, but I guess. Any, any update on the voting machine? I've been following the stuff in the newspaper and they, they narrowed it down to three?
They haven't announced anything yet.
And they're waiting for another election in May? Yeah, to see how, how they work before they narrow it down. I think that's what it said.
There is a bill in the legislature to, uh, address that for funding.
Good, I hope so. You know, they can mandate that.
Yeah.
And they gotta fund it. Just longer than towns can absorb this. Is there anything else?
I think that's it, why don't you say me?
What are your questions? Very good. John?
So we, we pretty much made a circle of the main roads with the grader. Road posts were lifted on four three, which is very early for us. Um, and then the grader went down because, uh, motor mops didn't do what motor mops are supposed to do when they don't have bolts holding them. Evan was able to fix it.
And shut them up and get them back lined up again?
There was only two bolts on these, uh, one bolt on each side.
Are they rattling out of there or breaking them?
Broke, yeah.
How come?
A lot of drilling and working out. Um, the backhoe is now down till February. We're waiting on parts. The expansion tape let, let go and, uh, yeah, it wasn't a good day, it was a Monday. We got our international back. Fifty-three hundred dollars later. Um, and they have an engine length, but we'll have to see how that works out. The trucks run it. Uh, the five-fifties back, fourteen hundred dollars later for a passenger mirror.
I'd heard that rumor.
Yeah, uh, they said if it was a diesel, it wouldn't have run.
Really?
Wouldn't have run. There's a printed circuit or something in there that get it feeds a computer.
Somehow the idea of putting circuits in mirrors.
Yeah, so we, uh, we gotta do something with the wings because it's a common, it gets bumped. Um, so as far as the dump, the baler is in, they have seen it Saturday.
Yep.
And Larry was able to hook it up to the old panel, um, and the tech is coming back Wednesday at one, if you want to know. Uh, and maybe we'll see if we can make a bail.
We got the wire and everything else we need, was it?
The, it's hooked up to the old panel.
No, but I mean, won't there be wires that go around these bales or?
Yeah, we, we have a, uh,
You have all that.
A role of that, uh, to start with. Uh, Andreas will be out for surgery, may talk, four to six weeks. Talked to his wife this afternoon.
They sexed.
Uh, last day of May sex, surgery's May twelfth. And he'll be out at least four to six weeks. Evan will cover Wednesdays, David will cover Saturdays. Labor ready more than likely.
Saturdays.
Saturdays, yeah.
So, so when's the baler gonna be up and running?
When is the baler gonna be up and running? That's why the tech is coming Wednesday at one.
Is that what Dave was talking, David Foles was talking about?
He asked to program the variable drive?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're still waiting on, uh, new meters and, uh, box and.
Yeah, it, it was a temporary hookup that the electrician did, uh, he's still waiting on the upgraded panel and, uh, meter socket. It's open this month sometime or a day, um, but it's all prepped and ready and, and it is running and we can run it. So, um, once the training is over and everybody's comfortable with it, then I think probably we look at a start date for the increased hours and do it, do the Tuesday hours so we can start baling, um, using the big baler and, and being open. Not sure when that's gonna be, but I think we should run it for a couple of weeks. Um, to make sure everybody's good with it and it works fine and then think about, uh, the increased hours.
I, I have Evan currently building a table to help with the process. And we have a trailer full of cardboard waiting.
So is that, is that gonna depend on when, uh, Andreas is coming back or something?
It would be extremely helpful.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Uh, with the shopping, cause the boys just, Saturday's not a good day.
No, no, I guess.
And now, I cover Tuesday also, maybe an issue.
Yep.
Yeah, you say he was gonna be out for four to six weeks?
At least.
What's rotator cut?
Oh, oh, I'm here in the shoulder. I don't have any paperwork as to what. Um, I, I talked to him today to get, uh, a doctor's note of some sort.
Okay.
I did have a situation come up on Hall Road. I don't know if you know about this?
Nope.
You gonna talk about Sam down the end or?
Well, there, there's storage going in.
Yeah.
I think on zoning, uh, I mean, uh, planning, you may have seen plans, been in discussion since September.
Yeah.
I heard about it last Thursday for the first time. Um, but they're currently taking material from the right-hand side of the road to bring it over the left, which I don't know.
I don't know, I haven't talked, I haven't talked to, um, Greg yet. Let's see what the plan said on it. I, I don't think they were supposed to.
One of the, one of the problems is that they're running a, a off-road dump truck, one of the great big ones.
Yeah.
And they're hauling material across the town road.
Yeah.
Which really isn't built for that. And that, you know, does some damage to the road eventually if you haul enough. Uh, so, um, we don't have any ordinance or policy or like that that specifically addresses that, other than, um, you know, when John gives a temporary driveway permit for logging, we talk to loggers, they don't always get them, but when they do, we talk to loggers and, um, depending on how much material they're gonna take out, they may end up having to take a bond on. Uh, in a case like this, we, we may wanna look at some kind of policy that says, uh, for, you know, construction like this, we may think about required bonding.
Yeah.
For, for this.
It almost feels like an excavation permit should have been called it.
Well.
I'm thinking alteration of terrain.
Yeah, excavation.
We ran into this problem down at the end of the road when Hiltz was hauling stuff out of there, hauling over Pembroke, uh, Pennacook and bringing other stuff back. And, um, they had gotten very close to the point of requiring a gravel permit, a gravel permit. And once we started talking to them about it, they stopped. Um, but again, this is another operation where they're probably right on the edge of being legal and, um, so.
When, when I ask, they got, uh, the gentleman today, uh, you know, I, I, you got your alteration for this? Oh, they tell me all the permits are in place. I go, all right. Maybe I should introduce myself, cause I don't know of any.
So I was wondering that, cause I was there when they first started on the planning board and they first came in. And I was wondering if they had made any stipulations about on the plan itself.
I don't believe so, but they were gonna clear cut the piece where they were gonna put the storage units, but I don't think anything was talked about for it out. So they've actually cleaned all the trees and the storage unit all the way down, probably to the end of the road, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, to the end of the pavement before they were, uh, lying ended.
Right, it looks like what they're doing is pulling stuff out of there and then taking the, the old burden or whatever you wanna call it, the dirt and the roots and everything else and backfilling it as they go down through that.
Burying what they.
Burying everything in that hill there. I took some pictures. You know, they're dragging it across the road. They're actually building the whole thing up on the, across the street.
Yeah, they're building it up for the storage units, yeah.
When's your next planning or tomorrow?
No, that'll be a week from now.
So you're gonna talk to, uh?
Well, I'll, I'll talk to the building inspector on Wednesday and he can pull the permits, what permits they have. And maybe go down and have a chat with them and figure out.
Yeah, that'd be good.
How far they're gonna go, what more material they're hauling and everything and, uh, an alteration of train permit is required from the state.
Yes.
That's in the state, so we may end up having to get the state.
Any question finally?
Uh, are we talking about the road tonight out at, uh, the Range Road or not?
Range Way?
Yeah. Is that another night or? I would have looked at the, the Range Road out there.
For the class six, what way do you mean?
Well, it doesn't say it's class six on the map that we've got. It just says Range Way.
It, it's not on my inventory. It's on the tax map, it's Range Way.
What, what's happened there, looks like both John and Mike and me is that they plowed down through there for snow and they ripped out all the asphalt that was there. Or a good portion of it. I can hardly get the car down through there, so.
What, what are we to keep?
Out by Aspie's old place.
Oh, okay.
Crossing stages.
Yeah, crossing stages.
Oh, yeah, I, I saw that. Yes, yesterday we were out there.
Were you?
Yeah. It's just.
It'll look like Fisher trim.
It's pretty rough underneath there. It looks like, you know, boulders this size instead of gravel.
It's, uh, a coarse gravel.
Yeah.
There's no finding, you know? But it was paved many years ago.
Yeah, that was hot, yeah, I think they.
We used to plow it just fine back, you know, before and oh-five, just so you know. There was more of a turning around issue than.
Gotcha.
The religion at the times, you know more?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's even tighter down there, cause it looks like a bunch of trees fell in there and they just pushed them up against those, whatever they are, storage units that are down there, so.
Never been down there.
I moved some trees outside to turn around yesterday.
Anything else for John?
Nope.
And you're gonna talk to Greg and?
I'll talk to Greg.
See if there's anything you have.
Yeah, it should be on the binder.
I think it should, yeah.
Building inspector over there.
Yeah, cause I don't.
I, I guess, I don't remember.
I really don't.
I was sitting there.
Yeah.
And they never mentioned they were gonna do that.
I certainly don't remember.
I, I don't either.
No questions?
No questions.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John, my dear.
Even change?
How are you doing?
Did you do that estimation?
Uh?
Contact me back, you get that done, do it before.
Yes.
Anyway, I'm short this, uh, this month. I starting at the top, ninety-eight call, uh, emergency calls you got a date, a little bit above average for last year. Forty-seven inspections, trainings and all that stuff, all year to date. Fire prevention, uh, this past week I did the assembly, annual assembly inspections. At the O Works and the Gulf Force, they're both getting up running. They need that for their liquor license, so that was completed. Fired at the elementary school was done last week, some, those have done monthly. And we have a meeting tomorrow morning with representatives and consolidated, um, communications at this little, um, just, uh, just, uh, west of the school, uh, that little, um, building there, just to coordinate access and, and notifications and all that stuff, so. In tier two inspection reporting stuff. We have a new EMS director, Mike Proventur, he's a full-timer in Franklin, uh, he's really taken the ball with me. He's helped me out immensely with, with that project. It's a, um, it's a job that needs to be filled with the department and, uh, he's, he's doing really good. And we have a very active call force. It's really, uh, last week's training, we're fifteen, fifteen members of training, you know, where then we, a couple of years ago, we'd like, be happy to have five or six, you know, and it's not unusual for us to get half a dozen people out on call now. So, um, we're pretty excited about that. Yeah, energetic force. On four twenty-nine, it's a Saturday, we have a, uh, our first hopefully annual breakfast, pancakes, bacon, juice, coffee, all that stuff. Uh, run by the members to benefit the, uh, the association, the fire, uh, Volfire Fire Department Association, the sign up in town square. Spread the word, if you can make it, we hope to see you there.
It's on my calendar.
Yeah, good, good. Our forestry unit is up and running. Uh, we purchased a new engine last year and now it's running like it should. You turn the key and it runs and it pumps water. Every time you start it, every time you start it, so it's, uh, we're happy about that, so.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and let's talk about the eight hundred fifty thousand dollar engine purchase. Uh, I'm meeting towards, um, a, a vendor, E-one, uh, they were based out of Ocala, Florida. They're the ones I'm most familiar with. Um, is one of the reasons why I selected them, the durability. Uh, we've done a lot of research. Rosenbauer is still not out of the question, but we're meeting towards E-one. All major fire truck manufacturers are expecting a five percent price increase this June, so on eight hundred thousand dollar fire truck, that's forty grand. We will read that deadline. We'll have a contract signed by then.
Good.
Yeah. Um, one of the vendors, E-one, uh, offered a fifteen thousand dollar prepayment discount, so we give them that, um, the amount that's in the cap reserve for that. And I take fifteen thousand dollars off the bottom line of the truck. So, uh, we're happy to work that out. The other, the other one is, uh, is not great. Rosenbauer is not offering that discount, so. Timeframe update's still about two years, but the fire truck I'm meeting towards is a, um, it's a, it's a V-Max. Uh, it's like a rescue style body, but it's still a pumper. They have a couple in production already. The salesman doesn't know if they've been tagged yet, meaning the community is hot on that, so.
They meet your requirements, so.
Excuse me?
They meet your requirements.
Well, yeah, so basically when I see in production, you know, the, the processes are going through, the body's being built and we, we can still customize it to what, to the things we want. We're not looking for a lot of customization, but there's a couple already, but, and if we can tag one of those, it'll probably reduce our, our waiting time by like a year, so. Um, but we don't know until we sign a contract now. And with that timeframe, I'm meeting with him next Monday to finalize our specification and shortly they're up to sign a contract to meet the June price increase.
So Florida, will we drive it up or?
Um, I'll get to that.
Okay.
Uh, so the way a truck is built is, you know, you place it, you place the order and then you meet with the, you meet with the, um, um, the engineers and they have all their CAD drawings up and they kinda move compartments, they move things around, they make suggestions. And you kinda, it's like probably about a twelve-hour process. It's a day and a half and you meet with them and they make suggestions, then you, then your truck is built on paper. And then it goes into production and that, that timeframe could take twelve to eighteen months to basically to produce it. And then, you know, when it gets delivered, it goes on a flatbed and is delivered to, um, Alabro, North Alabro, Massachusetts, which is their, their local vendor. And then it's driven up from Alabro when they're done there, uh, to bring it, to bring it up here.
They do all that.
So in Alabro, they do the lettering, they do the tool welding, they do radial insulation, that's where they do all that stuff, you know what I mean? So we have, generally speaking, there's three trips from representatives from the fire department, purchasing fire department to, to the factory. They have two nights, three days, one day travel, one day travel back and one full day down there touring and meeting with engineers and going through things, um. Uh, so I talked to Ken and I think under that, um, I met, part of the decision process, you know, I saw in the committee in Nash for fifteen, twenty years and we've brought primarily E-ones, but I had, I had a mechanic, fleet mechanic on my right-hand shoulder all the time, so anytime we were in there with engineers, I took care of the sheeting configuration, the hose bed lane, the size of the pump and all that stuff. Size of the water tank. He took care of the turn angles, the, the axles, the brakes, this, that, he was, he knows what went back in his hand. And we were a good team. And when the fire truck was finished, we went and I looked at things and I did all my punctual usability, he did all this puncture, punctual, um, uh, uh, as far as mechanical and the things go. He's retiring this year, so I met with him last week and just a bend his ear about different things and he said, so hey, I said, if I can subcontract it, kind of deal with it, will you be interested to come on these two trips for us? And the two trips, everything's paid, the airfare's paid, great, and that goes to the cost of the fire truck, the airfare and the hotel are paid. Uh, the only thing, you know, anybody who'd have to give is their time, so there's, yeah, so he gave me a price, I ran it by Ken and I think with the price, he, he agreed to come on both trips with me and sit by my side and, and, uh, I, I put that under the eight fifty. That would fit right underneath that budget, uh, very comfortably, you know what I mean? So it's, uh, for some of your bad expertise, um, I, I recommend that Ken, that we, we need to move forward, uh, with that strategy, just like with the fire truck. Um, so, hope they have a contract signed now. We will have a contract signed before the end of June. I'm one hundred percent certain we're gonna beat that increase, so.
So, we buy these trucks and they're made of steel and they rust? Do, do we have a choice to buy them out of them?
This frame RMTs is, you know, the bodies are moving, the bodies will be moving, uh, and, and, you know, the, the frames are, are, they're, 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 they're protected for that. They go for New England. I mean, they're not the, we're not the first one to buy a fire truck in New England, obviously, and we said they're kinda built for that, they're galvanized and they're coated and, and all that stuff, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, they go out rough and they come back wet and dripping and they sit in a horn fire station.
Right, right, right.
Can't be good for them.
Right, you know, can't, just like I try, it's like, same thing, you know, so, but they go for that and I'm gonna keep, uh, uh, the options down in the quarter too. Do I need to pay them down in the quarter down there? Can I do it up here? You know, we're just gonna look at all those different options. I'm gonna talk to people that do this for a living. And, you know, and, and make the best decision moving forward, so. Um, and the last item is Lieutenant Nelson. He's known as always can be expected. He appreciates anybody who reaches up to him. He's going through a tough time right now. Uh, I expected, uh, death of his life. Um, he had a couple of days off last week when everything went down. He's got a couple covering this week, he's got a couple covering next week, cause his funeral's not till next Friday. He's in service next Friday at, uh, five and then he'll also be six to eight and a celebration of life. Uh, so I'm commemorating him and he's, um, doing what he needs to do and, uh, we're gonna continue partnering with him and, and, and check on him every day, so he's in a hell of a spot right now.
That's the one right on the man, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's all I have. Any questions?
Is this, uh, rain gonna help our, uh?
I hope so.
Forest fire?
I hope so. The, you've been to that west hole, we read flagging we had last week, I read that there.
I never seen that one.
That was, that was really, that was really, uh, we have a couple of people who just kinda think they're gonna, they're gonna burn their leaves today, you know, and, um, they were called in from the Old Hill Fire Tower, uh, uh, I think three different, three different occasions, you know, so it's very fortunate that.
So that's manned now?
Yeah, that's, that's manned during the, during the high, high fire day.
Are there any other ones around us that are manned too?
Oh, yeah, I know K S H is manned and all that stuff, you know, but we make it to them, uh, you know, it's a state, so they're really, they're paying up payment, they're pounding on reins off, when they can fill them, they have wise to fill and they throw them up there, but, uh, we had one down, um, Inter Vale that they had found. They were trying to burn at the, at the farm down there, down at the, uh, down, down at Inter Vale Road, Inter Vale and, uh, West Road and, um, they're starting to burn things and you get called, they got called in as, um, as boys in southwest. But it was line of sight from the tower. It was just a little, probably about a mile or more, but their, their best guess was, so we originally the special boy was boys in southwest and ended up being, uh, Joel actually called, Joel was getting off the highway, he saw the smoke, so Joel went down and he, so it was, I was down there, he was, hey, I think it's the same one here. And we called the specialty that up down there and it was, you know, most of them, oh, I didn't know, you know, we're not looking to, first time we're gonna educate, second time it'll be a fight, you know what I mean, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good way to handle it.
What's that?
Good way to handle it.
Yeah, 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 that's it. That's it, so that's all I have. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Such a big purchase.
Please, don't forget. Forget, you need security on that floor, I'm sure.
I may, I may.
Only, only in the winter though.
Alright, so the numbers up a little higher, we've been more, more vehicles now. I'm about to change the air, Vincent's on vacation for two weeks, so we'll be going towards that. Most of the, most of the shifts are covered. A little shorter at the end of the night, but, uh, maybe three shifts been covered. Chris, I think we stepped up quite a bit and took most of the empty shifts and Lieutenant and myself are gonna cover a few extra hours during the night time. Uh, state police handled seven calls in a month of March. I don't have their calls, volumes for this month at all, but they, we just got their call volume for March. So they did seven calls for us, which we're not, which is much of anything, just the times that we're not here. The floors are completely done and the PD will set for the old captain's office, which we totally forgot about. So, I'll, I'll, I'll get numbers there just for future preferences, cause, uh, the chief and I were talking about that, making that into a, a meeting, in case we ever need it.
Where is this now?
It's the old captain's room on the fire side.
It's, it's.
So we go all the way down the hallway and then to the right goes outside.
Yeah.
There's a room right there. They use it as storage.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Radio, you hear storage right now?
We forgot about flooring in there.
Hasn't seen much use anyways.
No, we were gonna put a bunk in there and stuff, you know, but it's, uh, it's, uh, in emergency at this moment, but.
Is that gonna be part of our coverage from the new air conditioner that we're?
It is, uh, yeah, it had like that in there. There's one of the, the main bunk room and there's a, one back room also.
I mean, to get it up and down, it's cheap, cheap money. Like I told the, the chief today, cause you're always gonna get a bed and like, just remove one of the beds from there and put it there.
Yeah.
You know, especially for the, if we needed it right away, if we don't need it at the moment.
Um, do we have any females need the department?
At the moment, no.
Mike, is it the same setup in the women's room, lockers, shower, et cetera?
Yes, so, so like the PD has one locker in there.
Okay, yeah.
And then the, uh, the fire has, has their sets that they have in there.
Yeah.
It's got, I think it's got one shower. It's just a smaller version of the mince, that's all. But the floors are completely done in bolts, which came over really good. Um, we did have a little problem with the rain, a lot of phones today, I was gonna comb it out. We have to reset those a lot lately.
You understand what?
The, the phones just won't work. And so it, it happens quite frequently.
All right, I talked to the vendor two weeks ago. We got a problem and, uh, there's a server up at that building and that serves the phones up there and at the town office. And that server, uh, he was gonna try and update some software, but it's, uh, almost ten years old now. And he feels that it may have to be replaced at some point. He's not sure when, but, but he was gonna try and update some software on it, see if that helped. Um, but he said we should probably think about having to replace that server at some point.
Yeah, I mean, some orders will come in, the phones aren't working at all.
Yeah.
Pay some of the phones working, handles not working. It was really weird today.
Yeah, mine, mine broke like six or eight times today.
Yeah. Did you know the Verizon cut off our three G?
On the cell service?
Yeah. I lost my phone totally, right? I was depending on our extender, they call it, and it just went, sort of like dead.
One of the old ones in the bag, is that what you had or? Frank on the side?
Yeah, I, mine went totally dead. I couldn't, couldn't fall out.
I don't get good service now. But mine isn't.
There you go.
Then, uh, one of the Cruises, uh, the one I drive, the charging system might came on again, which we just fixed that not too long ago. Ford could tell what to do. I should say the ponies, so they called Ford, Ford told them they had to reset everything in the car because they know it's a problem, so that'll be going back again in a couple of weeks. And assuming that the other car will be there a month later, because the other car was fixed a couple of weeks ago as well, and also now it's happening again.
These are the hybrids?
It's no problem. As long as they can keep theirs, it's, it's, I mean, not under our, but. The other, I can, we just, but these are PD, nobody calls them. We had some excited shooters over the weekend, which I'm sure they're something they really.
I think you were lucky it's on the hill.
Yeah, I spoke to a couple of things at ten, I, I, but I think I spoke to quite a few people today. I just like that works and unfortunately it's not much. It's a lot of force officers. Yeah, exploded a couple of things at ten, I, I, but I think I spoke to quite a few people today, and I just want that to work, and unfortunately, it's not much, it's a law enforcement officer, you can do as long as it, you know, get safe, but.
Did somebody call in on Saturday night, or?
Yeah, we went up there.
You did go up there?
Yeah, I spoke since the flood. Yeah, and then stopped for a while, and then started back up again a little hour later, for another forty-five minutes, and nobody called the second time, so. She actually came in and talked to me. Like I said, just call two weeks, and then, every time it's happening, we'll go every time, a lot of times, I mean, we'll stop. You know, some people know the neighbors, some people don't, sometimes it's just, hey, they were saying, that's, uh, that gives them. Depends on the neighbor, and people with guns, they know their rights, so.
This is, this is, Oodalaw wasn't too happy, I know that, wasn't he?
No, no. That John's like?
Yeah.
Can you call me something like that?
This is pretty sick lately.
Yeah. Other than that, they were telling me your problem was hard. Other than that calls, we won't talk about here. Any questions?
Thanks, Steve.
On the period, of course, yes.
Thank you.
Justin will be there.
Catch you all tonight. Thank you, good evening. This is what I've been chasing the boys with.
Thank you.
My, my, the door. Stick your fingers. Thank you. Thank you. Just a couple of things. Uh, I've got nothing better to do, so I'm orchestrating Memorial Day. Dad's done it for forty years, um, and I'd like him to, he's decided to hand that off to, uh, Mark Stevens and I. So we'll be orchestrating that, uh, so that is Monday, May twenty-ninth, and I asked the gentleman to participate with walking if they wanted the color guard. And also with, uh, traffic at the bottom.
Yep.
By Elkins Memorial.
Rachel, is your dad gonna march, or is he gonna?
He's our keynote speaker.
Okay, so he's gonna, yeah.
He'll continue, I just want to give him the honor of enjoying it, it's, you know, it's kind of stressful, so.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, so, uh, he'll be our keynote speaker, we have some neat little additions this year, uh, Mark and I are inviting some, uh, we're gonna have a, we might have a wheel and jeep. Um, we're, we're figuring that out, someone's gonna come, we'll have that for display. Uh, four H is back up and running, so they'll be marching down, um, so it's a reinvigoration of the Memorial Day proceedings, so, um.
Are you looking for selectmen on that too?
Yes, please.
Come here, I'm gonna do the thing.
I always say, nine forty-five at CBS, nine forty-five.
What date is?
Monday, May twenty-ninth.
Yep.
That would be wonderful. Band and, uh, Louise, you don't worry about the flag.
How are you gonna replace Wayne?
It's hard, it's, it's hard, that's a lovely service.
I don't think you do, I know the answer.
That's a lovely service today. So let's know more about it, um, Big Truck Day makes its triumphant return, um, so I sent out an email to Fire, Police, Highway, and Ken. Um, and we had commitment from Highway, uh, Fire, and assumed to be Police, once Mike gets to the park, um, July sixth. So Big Truck Day in the past has been Elkins Public Library's biggest event, a hundred and eighty-five kids usually in attendance, um. And there's always great representation, I give the guys breakfast, and then the kids jump all of the trucks, um, and we have some activities at the same time. Um, and then at a designated time, they all roll out, um, and then I do lunch, uh, and it's wonderful, because sometimes it's the only time that the Highway Department gets to talk to people. And, um, as opposed to Fire and Police, who have more of an opportunity sometimes to see the public through, you know, fire awareness, charades, that sort of thing. The Highway guys don't get that opportunity that often, um, so they always usually jump right on that and embrace that, so. Uh, that's Thursday, July sixth, and it's right in the parking lot, uh, and that's right near Shaggy. So, um, and, um, I confirmed with GM today, um, May twenty-second, if you wanna come over after your meeting concludes. Um, I'll be ready to do my presentation on library governance. And I have some handouts, and I'll make it as easy on you as I can.
I'll definitely be there.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, yeah, so that's our second meeting of the month.
Yes, I have it the same day. And other than that, things are just popping at the library, we're just going.
Um, do we need to send a truck by and pick up the stuff on the end of the building, or where does that stand at?
I love that, is there stuff still out there?
I guess, I don't know what the stuff is that's out there, there's some, uh, uh, banned platforms for the, you know. Yeah, the group itself stuff out there.
A farmer's market.
Farmer's market, thank you. Those, those are there off the side, but there looks like some cabinets or something are laying on the ground.
I will look out there, the Historical Society, I think is throwing things out.
Think that's their stuff?
I think that's probably their stuff, not mine.
Yeah. Um, how is the door coming, have we, any nick, any progress?
Yes, I talked to Pete Howell last week, who has, he walked through in January, and he's still waiting for his bid. Um, not feeling real positive about him getting back, and he said he'll get to release it that last week. If there were other handyman that could do it.
I don't know any.
I don't either, I would love to. I don't know if.
The doors, it's got a gap underneath the door on the end, the fire, the old fire door.
Oh, okay.
And it's nothing but a steel door, so it's gonna be.
Historical society door, it's the same door that I went in and out as a child.
Oh, the back fire door.
It, it needs some sort of insulation or something around it. Problem is, the whole thing is steel, so the frame around it was originally cast into the blocks is steel, and, you know, it's just leaking heat like crazy.
And all sorts of stuff, I would say about happy, all sorts of things are whacking in.
Ooh, creepy problems.
Lots of creepy problems, and when they die and they dry on the floor, it's a lot.
So at summertime, when we looked at the, uh, AC unit in that end of the building yet, or the heat pump, or whatever it is.
So the guy that installed these came when he was putting refrigeration in this, he was gonna take a look at that, and he went inside. He didn't realize the unit was on the roof, so they didn't have a ladder, so he was gonna get a ladder and come back and take a look at the roof unit.
Okay.
Um, his biggest concern is the age of it, and because refrigeration, that, uh, material that they use in the older units is no longer available today. Can't use that R twenty-two anymore, you have to do a different refrigerant, so he wasn't sure, which might mean changing the coil. But he's not sure, so he ended up getting up on the roof and look at it, and he was gonna come back, um, and, and do that, so.
So I know, I made a new key for Sam, because he needs to get into the panel, cause the only interaction of the library is that it comes off the main panel. And the Historical Society doesn't have the panel key, which I've changed now, so that Sam can get in there and check the breaker.
Oh, okay, it's, it's working though, other than that, right, we know it's working or not?
Oh, the new split hasn't worked there about two weeks.
Right, but is it coming from your panel, or is, what's the problem on that?
Uh, it's not, the panel's fine, the breaker's fine. It's the unit.
We were also gonna look at the extending the heat better down from the end of the library, or, cause I know it's cold in that room, right?
Well, the hope was, you mean in the, in the Social Society office?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's another whole ball of wax, because that's all ducted up there, so they would, they'd have to pull the drop ceiling down and, probably try to do something with the ductwork, I would imagine.
So I already moved the zone, I moved one of the zones farther down.
Yeah, thermostat, thermostat was moved down, with the ducted systems, they have the baffles in them.
Yeah.
And so all that thermostat really does control the baffle, the open the baffle, and the tele heater to come on. But if ductwork isn't done correctly, and if there's a return in that area, it's not gonna be able to suck the cold air out, get the hot air in.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, we have to get an HVAC technician in there to look at it, see.
And that could be the Historical Society's budget?
Yeah, well, they really don't have a budget.
So if, you need me to meet him, or, I, I don't mind going over and talking to him, or whatever you'd like.
The HVAC people? Alright, well, we'll try and line somebody up, and have them come take a look at it, um, we have had, we have had a problem, but the guy that installed these doesn't do the ductwork stuff. He only installs these, and then he does plumbing, and he, uh, not, not commercial ductwork. So we have had a problem finding a commercial, uh, heating company that will work on our systems. We had a company that was doing work up at the municipal building, and they lost some of their employees, and so they're no longer doing service work. So we had to get, and then, one of the other problems is, uh, a lot of companies now, like Huckleberry, won't work on a system unless they're providing the fuel. So we've had to get Eastern to work on the ones up at municipal building. They're the ones supply the gas here, you can call them, they are very expensive, so it's kind of.
And in the, in the meantime, I don't mean to interrupt, but in the meantime, when there are people in the Society, they have a little space heater, um.
It might be just as cheap to put a little electric heater in there, okay?
Maybe.
They're not in there that often.
Yeah. I mean, it's not a very big room.
Well, it's not like it's below freezing in there.
No.
You know, it may be sixty-eight out of the library, but it's gonna be sixty in the cap room, you know, so it's not, not like it needs a lot.
Yeah. I mean, keep your eyes open for the electric ones, see if that would do the trick.
Well, we could do that, or have a electrician look at, and see if there's a way to get a circuit in there, to put a baseboard.
Yeah.
Electric baseboard in there, like we did in the bathroom up here.
Yeah, I think I'd rather see that than the portable pipes, yeah, you, yeah, you know. I'd much rather see something properly installed, but we're not worried about burning the library down, right, so. Yes, we all would be.
Yeah.
So, Rachel, you've had an electrician that has been doing work there, but how is that working out?
Yes, bacon electric.
How is that?
Wonderful.
So, maybe we could give him a call, and.
Okay.
See if he can come at least take a look at it, and give us an idea of what.
Just like a, just a simple baseboard, not even.
Just a baseboard unit in that room somewhere.
Well, let me slippery slope in historical society, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, I can't imagine that it's gonna be a lot of money, and you do have different funds that you could pull from somewhere if you had to.
Do they have a budget, or?
They have a very small budget.
Yeah. I'll have Zach come and look at a, just a baseboard.
Yeah, I think if we had one, maybe that was on a timer, ran for a specific period of time, and shut itself off in front of the race.
Yeah, cause my boiler's doing all it can, you know, and when I moved that thermostat, thermostat it did, and.
Yeah, out the lower.
Yeah, yeah.
But the baseboard is probably all you need, they're not in there that often.
Yeah, I think that's a good solution.
And the door is gonna help.
So, stay after, if, if I need to involve that girl.
I'll, I'll keep working on that door estimate.
Thank you.
But you, you hit me on the head, I mean, that's the same door, and it's a steel frame, and so a regular handyman is kind of scared off a little bit, cause it's a fire-eating door. So, I did pose the idea of just length there, and so Ken's getting me those numbers.
Okay.
So, stay after. You all set?
All set.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank, thank you.
Oh, on the decks.
No.
I believe, yeah, on six, eight, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I haven't seen anything that I don't want.
Yeah, I haven't seen.
And that's the first I've heard.
Yeah.
Right, do you want to sign stuff, cause how would the market's coming in at?
Six.
Six.
Yeah, okay.
I have a manifest in the amount of ninety-one thousand, fifty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents, this is an account payable manifest.
Still in motion. Second?
And then here I have the Title V tap session, is this the one Ben, uh, uh, cabinet, uh?
Oh, yes.
Talking about?
Yes.
So we, uh, would like to make a motion to.
Ken, we need a motion to adopt this?
Yes, and you can just make a motion and adopt the R S A.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adopt the R S A?
R S A ninety.
That's what I'm looking for, actually, eighty, uh, fifty-two dash C.
In order to accept credit cards.
Yep, in order to accept credit card payments.
Second? Someone? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you'd like to sign it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you get a sign this? Did Sam talk to you at all about one of the appointment slips we signed?
Daniel?
Hmm?
For Daniel?
Uh, no, uh, I don't think I remember.
Oh, yeah, I just didn't downtown.
Yeah, they were.
I got, I must have at the municipal, whoever the department had, or the chairman was.
Yeah. All, all I think?
Oh, yeah.
Mika? Rupert?
Rupert.
Yeah.
Steve.
I'll, I'll be, uh, I don't know. We have a, an appointment slip for Ben Stonebreaker, that was an alternate for the planning board.
Yeah.
Who is it?
Teacher, they live on New Road.
New Road, yeah, his wife Kelly's on the, uh, CCPC.
CCPC, okay.
He asked to get involved, and, uh, first we tried to put him on the Solid Waste Committee, but they meet me afternoon, and that's not gonna work at all.
Yeah, I think he not only teaches full-time, but he's in the master's program somewhere.
And we have, uh, an appointment. for thirty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents a refund. We got a refund because the buildings were removed prior to April first. This is at one forty-one Baptist Road. Kent, does this brown hog stay all over again? Hazard mitigation.
So.
This is done.
Is, they are, I was contacted, I sent an email around,
Yep.
that Stephanie, uh, Central Hampshire had worked with FEMA and New Hampshire Homeland Security and they came to an agreement, they would accept our,
Oh, yes.
our plan.
It's a time sensitive, right?
Very time sensitive, it has to be done tonight, I have to send it in before eight o'clock tomorrow.
Ah.
Get the Polar Express out of there. Well, that doesn't make you happy, does it?
Does it make me happy? Do you want me to dance for him, please, Dan?
I would like to see that.
No, you wouldn't, that would be pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you have to have a motion to adopt that.
This is the, uh,
Hazard mitigation.
Hazard mitigation plan.
I make a motion that we adopt that hazardous mitigation plan for paperwork for signing or?
Yeah, updated twenty twenty-three.
Updated twenty twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
It's like the deadline. It's all good.
Next, we have an application for current use. This is for, in, in long?
Intermail road.
Intervial ninety-five intermail road.
You guys gotta sign this back page still.
Okay.
Catch. Why have to stop the train?
And then we have a payroll manifest in the amount of,
You can come across.
Forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars sixty cents.
So moved.
Second?
Do you want this, Kent?
Yes, please.
Put it directly in. I believe Kent still needs to sign it.
Oh, yeah.
Come on, yeah.
I think that's it for the sign.
Yep.
Yep.
It's just had one page, yeah?
Yeah, it's only one page on this current use app, this is for Jan.
I, 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 I will, I think so, but.
Yeah. Yep, that's it. Jan.
Ready for Howard?
Yep.
Thank you. I, I don't have a long spiel.
Okay.
I really just wanted to take a few minutes to update you on where we are on community power. Because thanks to the decisions that you made two weeks ago on April third, we are pretty confident, I should say very confident, that we are going to be going live um, in Canterbury, beginning to provide electricity service to residents who don't opt out of community power, um, on either May thirtieth or June first. And I just wanna take a minute to talk about, um, a decision that the Coalition Risk Management Committee took, um, on May, excuse me, April twelfth, last Wednesday, um, as a result of, of your agreeing to go forward with the cost sharing agreement and the three arms policies. The Risk Management Committee on Wednesday, on Wednesday morning, voted seven to zero to authorize Ascend Analytics, one of our consultants, to begin procuring power for residents of Canterbury and Portsmouth. You'll remember that, um, there were ten first wave towns that were scheduled to go live with community power this spring. And for a long time, we didn't think Canterbury was gonna be able to squeeze into that, that timeframe and that we would have to wait a full year until the spring improved from the four. It's pretty clear now that we're gonna be able to go live in June, which will be a month later than the ten first wave towns. But they're calling Canterbury and Portsmouth the Wave One Plus Towns, which indicates where we are, we're gonna be able to take advantage of the same fifteen point eight cent per kilowatt hour base default rate that, that the ten first wave towns can have. But it was a very interesting meeting of the Risk Management Committee because, and, and, I was there as the authorized officer that you, you nominated, uh, two weeks ago and my counterpart from Portsmouth was also there. Um, and, um, the, 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 I call them the gnomes, I can't help it. I think of them as these very wise guys who sit out in beneath some mountain in Colorado and just think all day, but they don't, they, they're out collecting lots of information. And Scott Riddlesworth, who is a gnome that is working most closely with the Community Power Coalition in New Hampshire, explained that there was basically enough power that had already been procured for the first wave towns to serve Canterbury and Portsmouth. Because there had been lower demand than usual in the late winter, even though we had those snowstorms at the end. Um, and because there was some confusion coming from the utilities that were not providing all of the data that we were entitled to under the new P U C rule, which had the effect of depressing the power that appeared to be required for the first, the ten first wave towns. So in theory, there was enough power there to serve Canterbury and Portsmouth without going out into the market again and buying more power. But, um, we needed to, the Coalition needed to have, um, Ascend authorized to begin commencing, to, to, to begin, um, procuring power in order to set the forty-five day clock running that will allow us to, to launch in June. Because that required a two-way deal. Canterbury's part of it was passing the cost sharing agreement and approving the three hours policy. The Commission's part of it, not the Commission's, the Coalition's part of it was commencing to procure power. So I learned a lot at that Risk Management Committee meeting, it's still way, most of it is still way older than mine. But there's a difference between hedging, which I think is the actual, um, the actual business of closing on power in the power procurement, in the, in the bulk power market and simply being prepared to do that. And for one reason or another, they didn't need to hedge in order to provide Canterbury and Portsmouth power because they had enough from the previous, from the previous procurement. But they needed to authorize the procurement of power in order to start this forty-five day clock running. So that, that clock started running with emails to the three utilities that, that served Canterbury that could be listed out on, on April fourteenth, last Friday. Um, and as a result of that, I think we are on track to begin providing actual juice, actual electricity to residents, either starting either the last day of May or the first day of, of June. Um, so that's really all I wanted to say, except I was gonna do one more thing, um, unless you have any questions. And that is to demystify the process of procuring power for the Coalition a little bit. Because what we learned after they procured the, the power for the ten first wave towns in early March, we learned that basically Ascend Analytics put out a request for proposals to a whole bunch of wholesale power suppliers that, that sell wholesale power to folks like us or to, you know, any competitive energy suppliers, any one of a number of different buyers. Um, and what we learned was that Ascend put out a request for proposal and we got four responses back. Um, and I've forgotten the fourth one, but the, they included Max Eerock, which is a very well-known wholesale power supplier that actually owns Secret Power Station, and Calpine, which happens to own the biggest natural gas plant in New Hampshire, in London. Um, and Morgan Stanley. I didn't know that Morgan Stanley supplied bulk power. But, but they, Morgan Stanley brought in the lowest bid to meet the R S P that Ascend Analytics put out for the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. And it came in at something like four point eight cents a kilowatt hour. Now, to understand that, you have to, you have to remember that that's just the, the cost of the bulk power itself. On top of that, you've got the Community Power Coalition's expenses itself. Everything from paying its consultants to, you know, setting up an office, starting to, to hire an accountant and a C P L, which I think we're gonna have this week. Um, so that gets, that gets, that four point seven is just the starting point. But between that, so the, the C P C and H expenses on top of that came to about eight cents. And then the difference between the eight cents and the, and the, and the fifteen point eight cents that, that can, that the Coalition is, is offering as its base default rate, that difference gets split forty percent between a discount from the utility rates and sixty percent for the town-specific reserves that are, are beginning to be accrued and allocated to towns like Canterbury and the other ten first wave towns, even though we can't access those for the first three years because they're required to establish credit at a, at a decent level for the Coalition as a whole. So I call, I call them enterprise shares. Anyway, I wanted to, I wanted to just see if I could demystify some of this blue bit because, um, it's, it's not easy to get your, to wrap your, your head around it. Um, so I'll stop there, but the, the basic message is we're on track. We, we're gonna be able to do it in June. And that's many thanks to you.
No, I, I'm gonna say it's thanks to you too, because I know how hard you worked, I was watching. And so, and, you know, this is amazing, nobody thought this was gonna happen this quick, but.
You had a pretty great committee.
We did, very good committee. Thank you.
Committee, didn't want to.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Howard, question for me. Um, how will we know where we are with the enterprise fund? Do they tell us on a quarterly basis?
We'll, we'll get regular updates on that, Scott, I don't know how often, but I would imagine it will be quarterly.
Okay.
It could even be monthly because, although I don't, I don't think the, I don't think the Coalition, the word, is gonna be meaning regularly every month. You know, I think it will be more like every two months. But somewhere between two months and, and three months, we'll, we'll see that. And I guess I should say one little thing, and that is, you'll all get a better sense of this as we roll it out, but, um, I think you all are aware that although we'll go, we'll go light in June, the reserves that start to accrue to Canterbury,
Yep.
uh, at a fairly generous level, because we got in basically as part of the first wave, um, those reserves will only accrue based on the rate, the, the, the rate of fifteen point eight cents for two months because all of the rates are gonna change at the end of July.
Yep.
Okay? Because all, all, all three of the for-profit New Hampshire utilities changed their rates on effective August first. And so the Coalition expects that it will be changing its rates, presumably to stay below the investor-owned utility rates. And, you know, we'll, we'll be voting to do that in June to take effect at the end of July. So it's gonna, it's gonna change real fast again. Um, and the next set of rates, which will go into effect for everybody at the beginning of August, are expected to be much lower as a group. What that means is the amounts that we'll be able to set aside for the reserve funds will be smaller because the, the rates themselves will be lower. Um, but we're still hopeful that we will be able to offer basic and opt-up rates, both hopefully, at lower rates than either Eversource or Unitile. Though not, of course, lower than the, than the Co-op, which basically is not-for-profit, like the Coalition, and does the same thing that the Coalition wants to do, which is ladder those, those contracts to purchase power. Uh, and, and, you know, some of them may be for three months, some of them may be for eighteen months, some of them far out, farther out than that, who knows? But anyway, that's. But anyway, that's what the owners do. That's what, that's what, that's what they do out in Colorado. So, anyway, that's all. I don't wanna take any more of your time.
All right, thank you, Colin.
Thanks.
Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
I have. They look good.
They look good to me as well.
Can we make a motion?
Make a motion, accept the answer written.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in business?
I do have one new business I have, I have work to bring up. The planning board gave a conditional approval for a subdivision on Fox Road. Mandy worked as the planning board associate, and the conditional approval did not contain all of the conditions that should have been put on it. And she's concerned that, that, that the planning board may have erred. So, I wanted to bring it to your attention. I know Kent, you were at the meeting, you made the motion. But, but I think that there's some things that, that were missing, and I'm not sure how to address this with the planning board. I, I think maybe through Kent, because you're the rep, but, but I think it needs to be addressed.
So I guess I'm, I'm, I was a little confused when that went on, because they, French walks in here with nothing.
Yeah.
And, and Greg started going down through the list of things that he needed to supply. And I thought that's what we were voting on at the time, but I guess not.
And again, I, you know, the conditional, it's a, it's a conditional approval, and there are conditions set on what he has to have, but there were some things that should have been part of those conditions. The application wasn't even a complete application.
No, it was not.
It didn't have the butters' names or signatures on it.
And no, no insurance stamp on it.
We don't have a copy of the plan at the town office. So if a butler wanted to come in and look at it, they couldn't. So there's, there's some things like that. There's, um, one of the, one of the items on the checklist is that they have to have a final approval from the state for a subdivision of less than three acres, which, I'm sorry, five acres, and which they don't have. And that is, that was apparently one of the wave, one of the waiver requests.
Yep.
Which the town really can't waive a state requirement. So, uh, again, I, Mandy brought this to me as a concern from, from her perspective as the planning board associate. And, um, again, I think this has to, probably should go back to the planning board with some of these things, and maybe a, uh, call the applicant and, and have them come back in and, and go through this and, and try and get all the, everything on that conditional approval. And, and again, the wave, any of the waiver requests, you know, the town can, can waive some of the checkpoints, but the town can't waive a state requirement.
Yep.
So.
Is there one of the copies there?
Yeah.
Can I take one back to the office?
Yeah. It would be nice to have one at our, our office, in case one of the butlers came in and wanted to look at it.
So, can, I, I see Mr. French's name.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is Joel.
Can Dave or we do this while he's behind on his tax?
I'm not sure where he's going. I, I heard he was heading to.
Okay.
I don't see any reason why you can't.
Does he retain the responsibility for this?
He's, 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 he's a daughter.
And, and we didn't get all the cards back from the certified letters that went out to all the butters either. So that.
That's kind of.
That's a concern also.
Yeah.
Particularly the, the large property that's behind there. You know, let's see.
Was on the occasion.
So, um, anyway, I, I, say, Mandy pointed this out to me, and I told her I'd bring it up to you guys, and, and I think some kind of communication between the board of selectmen and the planning board on this.
I'll, I'll handle that.
Okay.
All right. I'll probably go up and ask, talk to Mandy, make sure of what she's missing.
Yeah, that, maybe on Wednesday, if you come up and, and we can go through this. And that's, I took, Mandy had given me some stuff, and I have the file here, and, and take some notes, and then maybe call, call the planning board chair and, and have a, have a quick discussion with him.
I just don't think we should accept these until they're ready, and it wasn't ready. Even if I'm saying it was.
They don't have a set checklist, and they.
No, well, we got the, he had.
Well, there is, there's a, there's a checklist that, that's required, and, and.
It, it was confusing, because Greg kept going over it, you know, and trying to add stuff, but then, I don't know if it went on to the list or it wasn't in the end.
That's what I mean, it's.
And, and, I mean, realistically, before an applicant appears before the planning board, they have that checklist.
Yes, they do.
And they should go down it and make sure they have everything. And if they don't, or if they're gonna ask for a waiver, that's fine. But there's certainly some things on there that. And, and, you know, some of the waiver requests were perfectly reasonable, but, again, the big one that kind of went through the flag杆 was the state requirement.
Yep.
And you can't get a waiver from that.
I'll comment on that.
All right, thank you. That was the, that was the new business.
Well, I got, I got new business.
Okay.
I got an email from Randy Johnson. And the, uh.
School committee?
School committee's gonna either meet April twenty-seventh or the following week.
So do we know yet, or?
What?
When they're gonna meet?
No, no, they don't, there's some things arrived, but those were the two days that she threw out.
What were they again?
April twenty-seventh, or May fourth? Or May fourth, I think. She, she was waiting for something.
Okay. You will keep us appraised with that.
Yeah.
Any meeting down here is before, or?
All she said is, she was welcome may aboard, and, uh, onboard. I got my license, all right. And, and, uh, we'll see. I just hope it's not, we're not heading off. We'll find out. Haven't been yet, gotta get up there before black flies. Yeah.
Actually, black flies are out.
They are.
It's a maiden, or.
Oh, are they behind?
No, they're stealth farmers.
Oh, they were brutal yesterday.
Were they? They biting them?
Yeah, oh yeah. They were hungry.
All righty.
I have new business at some point, too.
Oh, go ahead.
So broadband, I'm, I'm not gonna use, or maybe I'll use the term high-speed internet. I know we have a history with Comcast back in the day. My understanding is there was a contract, it wasn't honored to the town's satisfaction. Did we go to court over that?
No. The, the contract expired.
Okay.
So the selectmen refused to sign a new contract with them. So there is currently no contract with any provider.
Right. So Xfinity, I think, is the name now, correct, that services?
Yes.
And then, my understanding is there was a representative here within the last year?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, earlier this.
Yeah.
February, January, maybe, maybe some, I have them.
And was further action on, at that point contingent on them receiving a grant?
Yes.
That's okay, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Yeah.
They have, they have, they were the only ones to respond to the higher fee.
Yep.
The town brought out a year and a half ago.
Yep.
And they, part of the RFP, the confidential part of the RFP gave a cost per mile, which is confidential, and we can't, we can't release it.
Right.
I mean, you guys have options to, to see it, but we can't release it publicly.
Understood.
But it was to the, it was, the money that would cost was more than what the ARPA funding was.
Understood.
And at that time, in the, since then, um, the representative from Comcast, they have been applying for grants to the state
Yep.
through the BMGI
Yep.
and CARES Act. And the last, it was, uh, there's been ninety million dollars that have been distributed, one to the New England Electric Co-op and one to, um, the Consolidated.
Yep.
Neither one of those responded to the RFP.
Yeah.
And the RFP stated that the selectmen did not want to pay for duplicate services. However, there was no contract in this time with a provider.
Yep.
So the town was open to competition.
Yep.
But again, nobody responded other than Comcast. I got a call from the, uh, Xfinity representative today. That BMGI, um, money, the rest of it is about twenty-two million dollars left, expires, uh, in Ju-, July first, I mean, this, I have a copy of the letter. Then I came, I, I think I sent you the copy of the letter.
I did.
I, I edited it a little bit today.
Yep.
After a conversation with him. And basically, I added a paragraph that says the BMGI funds awarded to the state of New Hampshire have approximately twenty-two million dollars left to be awarded for the expansion of broadband. The grant award period ends July first. So far, there have been no rules published for the application of these funds by the Business and Economic Affairs Department. We are concerned that the grant application period will expire, and these funds will not be available for 2023.
Yep.
If that happens, there is more money coming, but it will be at least a year, if not more, of, that, that Comcast could potentially.
Yep.
And, and it's their intent that if they are awarded funds from this, this grant, that the town of Canterbury would expend no dollars. It would be the state funds and broadband. Xfinity would expend some of their capital
Yep.
to do the last mile houses and improve, uh, and, and build up the infrastructure that is there already.
Yep.
It would, they would, they would have to because of the added households.
Yep.
So they'd have to either run fiber or build up their infrastructure somehow, provide internet to all houses.
Yeah.
And they would do that. They would spend capital, and, and again, it's their intent not to have, to have Canterbury not expend any money.
Yep.
We have approximately two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of ARPA funds that has, I had to do a quarterly report this month, and it is listed as a, uh, lost revenue, which allows us to spend, we can, the way the, the rules changed on that last year, and the municipalities, other than the cities, the, there's a particular aim for it, can spend up to ten million dollars of ARPA money on what they consider as lost revenue through the pandemic. We have two hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Yep.
So we're well below that ten million dollar.
Yeah.
And that money can be expended any way the town sees fit, other than to pay off existing bonds. We can't invest it. There's, there's some conditions on it. But, but pretty much, if we wanted to put it towards the fire truck, or a new dump truck, or an addition to a building, or anything like that, that we would spend money on, then we could use that. So, that would be the hope, that we would be able to use that for paying for the thirteen hundred dollar mirror for the dump truck, you know, things like that. But, but, uh, we're still waiting, and again, I talked to, talked to him today, and, and he said, this money is set to expire, and the concern is that if the rules don't come out from the, the BA, that, that that money's gonna expire, it's gonna go to the general fund, and then that would be the end of it.
Yep.
It will be used for something else. So.
Do we write letters on something like?
So I, I, I sent that letter to you guys last week.
Yep.
And I added that paragraph. If you want me to send it with my signature on it, I was planning on sending it to our state senator Howard Pearl, our two reps, Mike Moffett, Jose, um, Cambers, and then Cindy Warmington, who's our executive counselor, and also a copy to Taylor Caswell, who's the commissioner of BA. I can do it with my signature, or I can edit this and put your signatures on it and send it out to you, and, and if anybody stopped by.
For the park, I think.
Yeah, well, you, you're.
Send, have, okay. All right, I will do that, and I'll CC everybody down at the bottom, and as also your names also.
All right.
That sounds good.
Sounds good.
Right. So, we would hope that that would get some kind of action out of the BA to at least post the rules, so Comcast can apply.
Right.
And in that letter, it states that it was confusing why it was only given to one company, and when there's multiple companies that offer broadband throughout the state. And Canterbury is not the only town in this, in this predicament, where we have partial coverage, and we're waiting for a, a provider to, to finish it off.
Yep.
So.
Is there anything else we can do to move this, or?
I, it, it's at the state level now, it's not the federal level, the federal, the federal government has done their part of it by providing this money to the states, and right now it's at the state level. So, uh, the governor council, the BA are the ones that are, the governor council are the ones that award the, the, uh, the, uh, grant money, but the, but the BA are the ones that do all the legwork, and.
I guess the only other, you know, certainly, as people approach me that know I'm, I'm on the select board now, broadband more than any other topic is, is what they bring up. And, you know, I know that on paper, about eighty percent of the town is covered, but there seems to be a lot of people that are in that twenty percent.
Sure.
Or maybe they're just vocal.
Yeah, yeah.
But is there any value, we've got some really smart, well-educated people in town with respect to broadband. Is there any value to forming a committee to perhaps explore options that we haven't thought of?
I, I, I would not be opposed to that, because the, the, the burden of this project has been shouldered at the town office, and.
That's, yeah.
It's a big project.
Yeah.
I, I would, it would be, I think it, it would be a good way, idea to start it.
Yep.
And if nothing else, if, if things, if all the stars aligned and you're able to get it, then the committee can say, well, thank you very much, and
Yeah.
we don't, we don't have a job.
Which would be a great.
Yeah, which would be really good.
Yeah.
But, but if, if there are people that are interested in, in doing that, I, I would.
I think there are.
Something to look.
Yeah. What do you two think?
Uh, if you've got some more volunteers, I, you know, I mean, what Howie and the group did there was amazing.
Yeah.
And if they could do the same thing here. And they're not interested, I did talk to them.
I was, yeah, at that meeting, but I, I do think that there are people in town that would be interested. Everybody call out for, for volunteers for a committee.
Do you want to, do you want to hit that out?
Oh, yeah. If I bring it up, I'm definitely gonna be the.
All right.
Yeah, I'm willing to do the work.
If we can, we could put something out on the town email and the website.
Yep.
Do it on a city level.
Definitely, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, because in, in, on the rural one, there's.
There's so many areas in town.
And I know that Loudon, Pittsfield, I think, Gilmanton, were looking at possibly forming a Co-op type
Yep.
deal.
Yeah.
And they were working with Central New Hampshire Planning to do that. When. Um, when, um, I was contacted by Central Hachre Planning, see if we were interested in it.
Yeah.
I explained to them where we had, well, what stages we had taken. And we were very far ahead of anything, any, any of them had done.
Yeah, was it?
So, yeah, it's like, yeah, and, and he said, well, he said, at this point, he said, you, you're, leave some bounds ahead of everybody else. Why don't you continue on your own and see how it works out?
Yeah.
So that's, that's what we've been doing.
Okay.
Maybe one or two.
That's what I'm thinking, yes. I'll give Mike a call and just ask him to update me on where they are.
Great, yeah. Sure. Okay.
It almost seems like the sooner we get this rolling, the better chance we get.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
It's just.
I'm not getting any other.
I know.
Well, you know, we figure that out.
And I had, I had put out in the last town newsletter, um, that, that asked people to contact their state reps.
Yes, I saw that.
I'm reading.
So I, I'm, and, and I know, having spoken to state reps in the past, that they get very few calls on things. And this is a big, big topic.
Yeah.
And I would hope that they would get some calls from, from residents that don't have broadband, that want broadband and would say, hey, what's going on?
Yeah.
Why, why aren't we getting the money? Why is, why are the awards, the contracts only being awarded at one company?
Right.
Sounds like a leveraging campaign might be the first place to start.
Yeah. All right. That's all I have for new business.
Do you have anything?
Uh, under old business.
Okay.
I'm still looking for support on the ZBA appointments with.
You know, I read those minutes over and over again and twelve, twelve, twelve pages?
Yeah.
Three times, how many pages?
Yeah.
And it seems like it was, to me, he was more on a, but bringing his own personal feelings into it. And my thought is on any of these boards, you're here to perform a service, you're here to help people. Whether you agree or not, you bring it forward. And you can say at a meeting that I'm bringing this forward because so-and-so asked me. It's not my own personal desire to see whatever move forward. This just kept going on and on and I, I don't, I didn't see the necessity. But I don't know, in the other minutes that I've read, I haven't seen that type of debate, so to speak.
I, I just think we have the ability to make a change and see if we can improve that board, and I think it would help to have some new blood in there. And he's just, I mean, he's, he's one.
How long's he been on the board?
I don't know.
What about?
Oh, he's probably six years at least, six years.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody?
Can I say something?
Yep. I find it very unfortunate that someone is willing to find him doing it.
Yeah, I do, too.
Just to say.
That's, that was the.
Yeah.
I find that unfortunate. And that's the reason I signed it, is that I felt that he's been a good volunteer in the, the ones that I've been to. Uh, I went to one New Freedom Academy, he was well versed and he asked a lot of pointed questions. And I just felt that he put a lot of, he puts a lot of effort into what he's doing on the board. So, you know, I, I, I hate to lose somebody like that.
I've had no contact with him other than that for the last meeting of the, uh, class two firearms. I was at that.
So, um, but I, I signed it anyway. It's up to you, too. Because I just hate to lose people that.
Understood.
There's certainly other boards you could get onto, and I, I realize, you know, you may have a strong feeling about this, but I think if we don't make a change here, that this is gonna just keep continuing. And it's not, it's not a healthy board right now.
But, but didn't you sign the ZBA program stuff along with this?
No, I didn't. I didn't sign his.
There was two of them.
There were two.
You didn't sign either one?
No, I don't, I don't know if I signed one of them. I don't mind.
That, that one that Sean, yeah, you said.
I signed Sean's, yeah.
Yeah.
He's, he's a, uh.
He's a member.
He's an alternate.
He's a member.
He's an alternate. I, I think it's time this board stood up and, and made a change on that board so we can change other things later on. I would like to see somebody with some.
Do you have somebody in mind?
Yes. It's not a problem.
But, um, I, I just don't agree with just getting rid of somebody because you just don't agree with their thoughts.
We have that responsibility and job as a board to, to occasionally do something to these boards to get them back in, in line again. And that board has done things that, you know, they, they didn't approve a, a simple request to have a workshop down on Boys Road. I mean, I went through all of them and read them. And, uh, I'm not gonna remember the other ones right at this point, but the, the fact that we asked them as a board to go back and reconsider the Pacha Mama situation, and they wouldn't look at it any other way.
They couldn't. But if you, if.
What do you mean they couldn't?
They can, they can.
They can, they could've.
They're bound by typical RSAs that the only reason that they can rehear is if there was a technical, like if a butter wasn't notified or something along those lines.
The RSA binds them, and, and, you know, there's a lot that all of us would like to see done differently. But there's RSAs that you have to go by. Would you like it on?
Well, I, I'm just saying, this is a chance to change that board's composition. And you guys may not agree with me, I'm not gonna change my mind on it at this point, because I've thought about it a lot.
Yeah, I know you have. But I, I'm not changing my mind on it, I, I just think that he's put a lot of effort into the, uh, the ZBA and, and done a lot of work.
Well, I hate to dump it on you, Scott.
I know.
If it makes it easier, what's up next year? He's done.
Gotcha.
It's very easier.
Yeah.
So I just, uh, there's gonna be a lot of changes next year. So you wanna give it more thought or?
I'd like to give it more thought.
Yeah, and, uh, you can, uh, let us know.
Yeah, the next, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, are they having a hearing, you have a hearing on December sixth, when's our next meeting? May? So why, uh, Scott?
Yeah.
Why don't you let us know that you're ready to make a decision and would, we'd have to have a.
We'd have that with the.
Yeah, we could have a short meeting, uh, at the office, like a.
Yeah.
And.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Let's do it now.
Everybody was given a, a, uh, copy of the profits and loss.
Yeah.
And I'd just like to point out some things where, where our budget is, uh, approaching some benchmarks here. On page four, the ZBA posted with sixty-one percent expenditure. Again, it's not, not a lot, it's not a huge budget, but I just look at some of these and percentage-wise. Um, the next page is the one that's a little bothersome. Um, the town buildings heat, oil, propane with seventy-one percent expenditure. Um, so I'm not sure whether we'll make it through the fall with the, with that budget. I mean, we do.
Do we know what's driving it, or which one of the buildings?
The, the, obviously, the price went up a little bit and we thought we had budgeted for that, we added some money to it. But, um, um, apparently the use has been that, that we had to, we'd expend more than we thought. Um, the alarm, the municipal alarm, building, building alarm budget is, is way overspent. Uh, but that was because we switched over to a different alarm company. We had four or five different alarm companies that provided alarms at all of our buildings when we consolidated last year. And there was a charge for that consolidation, particularly that building. Um, because there's, there's a fire panel and then there's a, um, burglar panel for the police department. And there was some software that had to be changed over and some hardware. So that was why that cost was so high. But that was a one-time expense and, you know, we won't see that next year.
Historical society is way up on their electricity, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Where's that come from, do you know?
I, hmm.
They have an electric heater over there.
Well, maybe that's what they, no, not, well, they do, no. They turn the heat off over in that building or they turn it way down.
Yeah.
In that building. Um, I don't know if it's, I'm not sure why, well, I, probably the, the cost of electricity was up and that's why it's, it's up there. But, um, um, if you go to page eight, the maintenance repair line for T three, which is the two thousand fourteen international, John said that they got it back, that was a, a fuel pump and some other issues. So we overspent that line already. Um, and the, the line for T seven, forty-three eleven, T seven, uh, it shows a four hundred and fifteen dollar expenditure. And that, it was thirteen hundred and seventy-four dollars, that's gonna be out of that for that mirror here. So, um, just, um, the next page, the pack of truck repairs. You can see we're always doubling on the expenses. The universal waste, um, was seventy-one percent expended. Uh, the groundwater testing, we're over-expending a little bit, but that was because the groundwater, they tested November and we didn't get billed for it until after the first of the year. So that's why, so what will happen is this, we won't get, require any more testing this year. Um, unless something happens in what the, the results were. Um, but, but, uh, so next year, we'll, we'll be getting, again, same thing, so we'll bump that up. And we're gonna have to bump that up anyway because of the increased test for, for the, um, the closure. So I just wanted to point those out. The bottom line, we're still not bad on, um, where about where we should be. It's just a couple of those, a couple of those where, where, um, we're a little high on, so.
When do we look at this again?
Every month.
Every month.
Every month.
To get it every meeting.
And.
Get it at, at the next meeting.
There, Jan uses principle in the morning. Um, and typically, like today, when Mary does accounts payable, like that, that mirror for the truck didn't get added in. So there may be some expenses that don't get added in before you get done.
Yeah.
And then the coffee. And we give each department head a copy of their department, where they, where they stand.
No, John, John hasn't found a truck yet, right?
Well, a, a, a truck in a yard, in a, in a dealership, no. We've checked Conquer Hillsboro, McConia. Um, he was gonna keep his eyes out, maybe check down in Manchester somewhere. And see, see if there's something down there. So. Other than that, he'll have to order one from McConie in September or whenever it is they, they allow them to order one.
Yeah.
Yeah. The state has the, I mean, McConie has the state.
McConie has the state, but then, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's all I have.
Do you have anything else?
Just looking at library, twenty-seven percent already.
Want to make a motion?
Actually, I want to take us back to the zoning board. I think what I'll do is sign that, I think next year is a good time to make changes.
Yeah, because there'll be big changes next year.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Rather than getting anybody back for another one.
And we still are going to the Waldorf, bringing the ZBA.
Yes, uh, next month, uh, I have, I'm gonna, our first meeting, we're gonna have the, I'll invite the ZBA chair in to discuss the secretary's wages. Um, and we're gonna have, uh, the representative from TD Bank in.
Yep.
And the treasurer to talk about investments. Um, I think that's it for that meeting, right? Yeah.
Yeah, and we've got to do, you have to be working on the job description, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's, I'm gonna meet with Jan on, on Wednesday and we'll look at the job description and, and, uh, we'll, we'll get that cleaned up.
Okay.
And we'll post an ad.
Okay.
For that and the transfer station manager.
Okay.
I went on the NHMA website and just kind of looked at what the other, uh, version assistance, I was just taking some work on that.
Great idea, yeah.
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 Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion each other.
Thank you.
Second.
And if you thought anything out with that one?
Yes, I will. Dave's.
Yeah.
I tell you.
Trying to talk to him.
She's taking a real.